...America and history for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Holbrook.
Here.
Counselor Donovan.
Here.
Counselor Katerina.
Here.
Counselor Blaze.
Here.
Counselor Benedict.
Here.
Chairman Sullivan.
Here. Item four, general public comments, three minutes, address and name. Anyone?
My name is Julie Hannan, fourteen Mass Road. Chair Sullivan, members of the council, citizens of Scarborough. I believe the letter and memorandum you received from me on Monday speaks for itself. For those of you who have not seen it or have not taken the time to read it, I have some available copies for you. I will simply state that I believe it is essential that our citizens understand their rights. In a republic in which we just pledged, and I saw many of us, but not all of us pledge, in which we have a representative government, it is essential that our representatives not only understand the laws of our land, but respect the rights of its citizens and uphold those laws. For those of you that aren't aware, I contend that our town council representatives, our town manager and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife have been violating, be it intentional or not, its citizens' rights under both the Maine Constitution and the U.S. Constitution, both the Maine and U.S. Constitutions, as well as violating numerous federal laws that guide the behavior of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I would include the Audubon Society if they had any authority, but they I would only accuse of environmental extremism and gross negligence. If your actions and those of Tom Hall and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife were due to ignorance, I do not believe you are any longer ignorant of those rights and laws and it is your duty to do the right thing. Doing the right thing includes considering the dog owners of this town. Dog owners comprise a significant portion of our population. More than fifty percent of our population has family pets. The nation has nearly seventy-eight million pet dogs. There are as many pet dogs as there are children under the age of eighteen. It represents a seven point five billion dollar industry, including our tourism industry. Dog owners are some of the best advocates for the outdoors and are your active supporters of the protection of the piping plover. In fact, if you've done your research, you will know that dogs deter crows and ravens and hawks, which are primary predators to the piping plover. The dogs are some of our best advocates for the outdoor, dog owners, not the golfers of Proust Neck and other recreational beachgoers. They are not necessarily protecting the piping plover. Dog owners should have the same access to recreational opportunities as do tennis players, soccer players, sunbathers, surfers, volleyball players, joggers, bicyclists and others who use our town parks and beaches. Dog owners have no greater claim than others, and we don't even ask for a fair shake, we ask for three hours and extended off-season hours. The citizens that you represent have spoken, they have signed petitions, a successful referendum, volunteered and donated money to establish a beach policy, guidelines and education, carefully regulated and looked after. Off-leash beach times can be highly successful with beaches looked after by the grateful dog owners, volunteers and community groups that support them. With rules clearly posted and doggy bags available and paid for by dog owners and volunteer cleanup crews, our beaches may be the cleanest in Maine. Having beach access in select areas of Scarborough will also increase tourism. More and more hotels are offering to become pet-friendly. If you restrict our beaches, you destroy a community, a community of people who play with their dogs at the beach. The New York Times reports, "Forget the treadmill, get a dog."
Can you please wrap up, three minutes?
I will take three more sentences if that's okay with you.
Yes.
In doing so, dog owners, if you give us this time, dog owners need to contribute to the enforcement and education in the cleanup. Counselor Donovan, I don't mean to pinpoint you, but I notice you did not ask Counselor Kate Sinclair.
Point of order, don't address councils by name. Address the whole council, please.
I noticed that one of your counselors was not asked if the beach will be closed to all when a piping plover was there. Let's remember, the golfers on Proust Neck are hitting golf balls into those nets if they're there, and the beachgoers are leaving trash that attract predators.
Thank you.
Have you read the U.S. Fish and Wildlife sidelines?
Ma'am, thank you.
I think you should.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for your time.
Hattie, Liam Summers, Holmes Road. I just heard a point of order, but I did want to ask that Mr. Donovan recuse himself from the vote on the proposed recommendations coming out of the ad hoc committee, simply because I do believe that is a conflict of interest for him to serve on that committee to craft those proposals and then have the privilege of voting on such proposals. So I would first and foremost ask that he respectfully recuse himself from the vote, not from the discussion, not from shaping them, but from voting on the eventual recommendations. I also want to remind this council that to date, to my knowledge, there has not been any incident reports submitted by the inland fish and wildlife department regarding a dog attacking a plover. At very least, you should have evidence of a wrongdoing before accepting a penalty for that. If such a report does exist, I simply ask the town to furnish it to the citizens for review. Now, look, we expect our officials to possess certain attributes. High among those would be courage and integrity. Sadly, we have watched our national government flush that down the toilet. Local politics should be a little bit better, a little bit cleaner. We all shop in the same grocery stores, we all have our kids go to the same schools, we all enjoy the same resources of our town. We don't always have to agree on everything, but we should disagree with integrity. We should be able to find common ground, and we should harvest solutions that make this community better. This issue has unbelievably torn this community apart in ways that I can't even fathom. So where do we go from here? Repeated discussions didn't solve the issue, a referendum didn't solve the issue, and apparently this majority vote didn't solve the issue, which is mind-boggling. So I look to each of you. You alone have the power to put an end to this. You alone have the ability to say enough is enough. Scarborough belongs to the residents, not U.S. Fish and Wildlife, or any special interest group for that matter. You alone have the means to pull this divided community back together again and get back to work on topics that are probably more important overall. So I ask each of you, are you truly confident that what you are doing is right for Scarborough? And are you personally willing to put your name on an action or legislation that can contribute to further strife? Or do you have the courage and integrity to stand up and put an end to this finally? To recognize a legal vote occurred that demands your attention and to understand there's a community of people willing to stand up with you to help make things better and to allow our community to grow? And that allowing a government agency to dictate its terms to our community is never in the best interests of the people that you serve. So the choice is yours. You each have a vote, you each have a voice, and how you use both is up to you. Thank you.
Pamela Rovner, King Street, Pine Point. After attending all of the ad hoc committee meetings, I actually feel sorry for the council members who did not attend those meetings. You might be asking yourself why, but it's because the majority of the committee have proposed a whole lot of new rules for the beach, such as during the spring, from this month to that month, you can walk your dog from this time to that time at this beach, but not at that beach. Then, if it's past this date, you can walk your dog this way, but if it's not that date, you've got to go that way. If this condition exists, you can walk your dog at this time. If it's not that condition, then it's forty days after that time. During summer months, you can walk your dog from this time to that time, but after that time, you have to walk this way. But in the winter, you also can't walk your dog on the beach from this time to that time, but you can walk with your dog from this time to that time. Then, we have the garbage. Garbage cans can be here, but they can't be there. A sign has to say that if you carry your stuff in, you have to carry your garbage out. You can't fly a kite, even though you may have been told to go fly a kite. You can't go do any windsurfing from this month to that month, nor volleyball playing from this date to that date either. A whole bunch of new signs are going to have to be made to let everyone know about these new rules of this and that. Then, there will probably be a special interest group that is for the signs, a special interest group that is against the signs, because surely the signs will kill somebody or something. Scarborough couldn't enforce the ordinances that they had, which is much easier than the proposed set of rules. Albert Einstein said, and I quote, "Everything should be made as simple as possible, but not simpler." I hope the council concedes Albert's advice. Thank you.
Seth Vernal, forty-five Maple Avenue, Scarborough. I was encouraged by the suggestions today to take the current ordinance and push it back in alignment with the plover dates, April first or whatnot. I think that's greatly mitigate any potential overage between the dog and the plover. Again, the dogs and plovers co-mingle, they have for, I think, thirty years, haven't had a problem. I understand also that there's a concern about the financial responsibility and liability that the town may incur, or things they may incur. If I were to go to the beach now and get bit by a dog, I wouldn't think to sue the town, I wouldn't think the town would be liable for that. If I got stung by a jellyfish at the beach, I wouldn't think the town would be liable because I was allowed to go in the water, be at the beach. So how the U.S. Fish and Wildlife were, you know, the legality of them first imposing the ordinance, I know has been a great question, something we may or may not explore, we haven't seen the records, we don't know what's happening there. I think going forward, there are ways to greatly reduce the liability in the wording of the ordinance and the allowance of the dogs, restrictive wording of the ordinance as opposed to permissive wording of the ordinance. So I think the wording could greatly reduce any liability, financial exposure, and I think aligning the current ordinance with the plover situation would be an excellent way to go. Thank you.
Carolyn Bratsky, fourteen Mass Road. I want to thank you all for doing the workshop that you did tonight. Seems like there's a little bit of temper and snow, and it was good to hear. I just wanted to offer this. In October of two thousand and thirteen, Secretary of the Interior Sally Jewell issued her first executive order, and it might be worth looking up, because in that order, she basically commands her agencies, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife is underneath her, to, in all cases where there's regulation or enforcement, to make sure that local governance and economics are reviewed and taken into great consideration. I have the privilege of knowing Sally Jewell, because she comes out of our outdoor industry, and I know Sally to be reasonable and fair. And I think that if there was a good case, and I think Scarborough has a very good case as to why the fine was unreasonable, and that the lease laws that we had are reasonable lease laws for our town, and until they can come up with a little better data on where the plovers are and what the true dangers are, the threats are, I mean, Maine Audubon Society's report didn't even have dogs in the top ten list, so that to come after us in that way, I think we have more negotiating power. I also spoke with Senator Collins' office about this issue. I spoke to them when I was down in DC for another matter, and they gave me the impression that the regional office of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife last summer was under a lot of strain and sort of influx because they were very short-staffed. So that may have been somewhat reflective of what came down here. So I would just urge you to look up that order, and I think it could benefit us as you seek to maybe renegotiate with them. Thank you.
Next, anyone else?
Park Demaro, three thirty-seven Pleasant Hill Road. Excuse me, I sent along an email earlier in the day, but I wasn't sure it got delivered. Google said that they were having trouble delivering, so I left off a copy. Basically, the suggestion was that, and I think possibly this might be the way through this thick of complex issues that you have to find your way through, and that is to take one issue at a time, vote it up and down, rather than to be tempted to try to find universal application of all possible conditions in the regulation or in the proposal. An example of that would be at Higgins Beach, I can't really speak to similar conditions at the other beaches, but at Higgins Beach, where approximately two-thirds of the beach is uninhabitable from a nesting point of view, given the high tide, the remaining third is clearly habitable, nests occur there. Not very many, but they do occur. So it might be a reasonable consideration that that first two-thirds of the beach be exempted from leashes in that critical period, given that it's highly unlikely that there will be plovers. I know there was some discussion that the plovers will range forever to feed, but we really don't know that. There really isn't any evidence to that effect. I've looked at the guidelines, certainly I can't pretend to tell you that I've read the research, there's a massive amount of research that supports the Fish and Wildlife guideline, but there is some reference to this particular issue and the probability that the birds will, they will forage very close to where they nest. And if that's the case, and there are a lot of ifs in this, aren't there? If that's the case, and it's reasonable to consider that the first two-thirds of Higgins Beach is not a viable place for plovers to either to nest or to be feeding, so that could be exempted from the leash, as an example of the kind of thing that I think you might be looking for to do. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? I'm going to close the comments.
My name is Rob McLaughlin, twenty-nine Vesper Street. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I just thought I would. You know, I've never been involved in politics my whole life, and I'm a new resident of Scarborough, and my first touch into politics was when the proposal was to adopt the ordinance banning dogs from the beach, April through the plover season. And got heavily involved, and I got to tell you, when the council adopted the ordinance requiring all dogs, I was flabbergasted, almost appalled that you could adopt a rule without any public comment, nothing. So then I got on the bandwagon, and I was involved when we tried to get the signatures and all the people, all the signatures, and we won by a landslide. I mean, you know, people talked and spoke, and then when you lost me was when you formed the ad hoc committee, because quite frankly, in my opinion, it's not representative of the vote, and it certainly, I mean, two of the members live at Higgins Beach. I mean, we have a lot of beaches in Scarborough, and just in that fact in itself, to me, it wasn't a fair ad hoc council. So I dropped out. I became disengaged, because at the end of the day, I kind of lost faith that we're gonna, because I'm going to end up doing what I want to do, because I look at my eleven thousand dollar tax bill for a hundred by a hundred square foot lot with a hundred and ten year old house that's eight hundred square feet, and I'm paying eleven thousand dollars in taxes. We could never enforce the old ordinance. At five o'clock, if you're down there, dogs are running wild. So we can put all the ordinances that we want, who is going to enforce it? And I'll be damned if I'm going to watch someone from Falmouth's dog running loose while I'm paying my taxes and I'm putting her on leash, it's not going to happen, and I'm not proud of it. I applaud all these dog owners, and they may be viewed as the vocal minority, but they're out for everyone. I'm the self-centered, all about me, because I'm going to do whatever I want, but they're fighting for a cause, and I applaud them and I thank them, and I hope that you're reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, I'm closing the comments section. Next on agenda, minutes of February twelve, two thousand and fourteen.
February thirteen.
Oh, oh, and February thirteen, I'm sorry.
Move of approval, checking.
All in favor? Close. Treasurers warrants, there are none.
Adjustments to the agenda.
Adjustments to the agenda, I'm sorry. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
That's okay.
I would propose, based on the conversation I had with Counselor Holbrook, an alternative order number fourteen twenty-three, and it would be entitled, "Move of Approval on the Request of the Ad hoc Animal Control Advisory Committee to Accept Its Report," period. So that would replace what's on your agenda.
This was on mine.
Yes, was differently on the agenda, because it was public.
Sorry. Period, rejection. Yep, yeah, okay, okay. No, I'm action. I'll speak from historical preservation.
Hi, I am Becky Delaware. I'm president of the Scarborough Historical Society and a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. I'm here tonight to bring you an update on what the committee has been doing. I believe there was a sheet in your packet on the preliminary list of places of significance in Scarborough. This sheet is a result of reviewing the nineteen ninety-three ninety-four house survey done by the Scarborough Historical Society as a result of a grant from the Greater Portland Landmarks. This survey found twelve hundred and eighty-two buildings of historic or architectural significance in Scarborough, which filled approximately ten notebooks. Aiming for a hundred buildings that were most significant, we condensed the twelve hundred and eighty-two down to three hundred and eighteen buildings, and then further reduced it to a single sheet that's before you. There were a lot of difficult decisions to make on which buildings to eliminate, which ones were more important than others. I wanted to explain the list on the sheet you have. The top list are those buildings that are currently endangered, and as you can see, at least one, the Benjamin Barn, is too late. It fell down while we were doing this process. These buildings are in need of immediate attention because of neglect or new ownership. The second list are those buildings that may not be in immediate danger because the current owners value them and are preserving them. But if there is a change of ownership, they very well could become endangered. The third list are those buildings that are integral to Scarborough's history and should be monitored so that they don't become endangered. The fourth list are lists of historic sites that are not marked. They are sites that are important to Scarborough's history but are not well enough known, so they could be easily recognized and may be forgotten and endangered. The fifth list is a group of cemeteries, the private cemeteries, that are at risk. There may be additional ones. This committee is going around trying to check each private cemetery. There are over fifty private cemeteries on private land, and we're trying to check and update the conditions so that we know which ones are truly endangered and which ones are being taken care of by the landowners. Tonight, we're hoping for public input on any building sites or cemeteries that we have not identified and should be. We are looking for incentives to help people preserve their historic buildings and sites. We are asking guidance from you to meet the goals that you have given us, and we're here to ask any questions that you may have of us.
So thank you. If you have any questions or comments, we certainly would like to hear them.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time, but I'm thrilled to see that Scarborough is finally looking at our historic buildings. I know I live in a pretty old house, not as old as some of these, but I just think that it's important to the character of this town, and I, you know, thank you for all the work that you've been doing.
I second that. Thanks very much.
I guess I was going to tie it in later, in my liaison stuff, but I just want to comment again, I mean, I can't appreciate enough the work of this committee has been outstanding, and again, the dedication to the research, which is daunting, and the time and the commitment to put into it. The one thing I do want to make sure is the list that you see in front of you, although we currently have no rules and no intention to enforce upon individual property owners, but certainly the intent of the list is that as these arise, that we have this as immediate radar for little things, like for Danish Village Fountain and Archway, that is under contract, that is something that's about to be developed, so as we, you know, they come through that planning board process, that maybe we can approach them and say, "Can you work this under the green space requirements?" And just to have these as the forefront, you know, we reach out to work with these folks to try to maintain these, because this is our history. And as you can hear, that history has dwindled quite a bit over the years, and the what's left kind of falls into play. Certainly, the work of this committee, now that things have been settled a little bit and there's some identification that's taken place, the next phase is about to go underway. So again, if counselors can be thinking of ideas and concepts for, you know, certainly our goal was to have carrots and to encourage property owners to want to participate, so if you have any ideas or concepts about ways to achieve that, working into that is the next phase. Also, we'll be working on some public outreach. Again, that's that next step, we'd like to take that core list of, we'll say a hundred, we'll say a hundred, and reach out as the town to these individual owners, just to give them a little bit of a, you know, an awareness, if you will, of, hey, you have something that's important, it's, you know, significant in a great, great way, and have that outreach segment. And then lastly, Tom had informed me that our new town website has some really interesting features, that we can have a survey section, so we can survey the public, and we'll be looking to implement that as well as places of interest or something unique, or trying to chase down a story sometimes can be the other difficult thing. So being able to pose a question to the public, geez, you know, we're really having a hard time, we heard there's an Indian burial ground here, but can somebody help us verify that? So, or point us in the right direction to find it. So they've done a staggering amount of work, and again, I applaud them wholeheartedly. So again, if you have any thoughts, please, please reach out, we'd love to hear them. That's the next phase, we've been working with the town planner to start looking at what we can do as a town to encourage, like I said, that preservation.
Yes, thank you. Because I meant, I meant we, it's too bad we didn't get it started a little bit earlier because we lost the widow's plot.
Oh, yeah.
Boy, everybody misses that, so this is an important committee for the town in the preservation of our history. Thank both of you, thank you.
Hey, Old Business.
Your Old Business, order number fourteen dash nineteen, is act on the name posted at the personal appeals board by the appointments committee. by the Appointments Committee on February twelve.
Um, Jessica?
Fill it up. Um, move approval of order number fourteen dash nineteen, reappoint Penny Azdorian Whitney to the Personal Appeals Board with the term to expire in twenty sixteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes. Close? New business.
And a new business order number fourteen dash twenty is act on the request to authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents for the Trigen project and authorize the reallocation of monies from fiscal year two thousand nine. Soya Road CIP account of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and the remaining balance of the ninety-one thousand, two hundred and thirteen from the Public Safety Building Reserve Account.
Okay.
If I could just offer a few words of introduction. It's interesting this is listed as new business. Uh, this project has been around and live, uh, since two thousand nine that I'm aware of. Uh, this is a project that was actually named by, specifically in the Comprehensive Energy Plan this town council adopted back in two thousand nine. And I'm certainly pleased to be before you this evening, um, ready to make this a reality. Essentially, this project, um, and we do have members of the Energy Committee here present, Judy Roy, Rick Miking is in the back, he's the current chair of the committee, and Mike Wallace. Mike serves, uh, interesting dual capacity as a committee member, but he also works for the consulting engineering firm that we've retained to assist us, provide technical assistance. But essentially, this project, in a nutshell, and I provide you probably far more information than you really were interested in knowing about, but, uh, the concept is that we would locate a new facility, a physical plant, so to speak, uh, right next to Town Hall here. And this unit would be gas-fired, uh, and it would provide for the heating, cooling, and electricity needs of this building. And there are certain times of the year, particularly on electricity, where we're producing far more electricity than is needed to power this building. Um, we have the benefit of a campus-style setup here. There's certainly a ton of electrical demand, uh, right behind us at the high school, so there's plenty of use and demand behind the meter, so to speak. Um, so, uh, in those, on those occasions where we're producing excess electricity, we certainly have ample need for that and- and we can reap the benefit and savings. So I'm here before you this evening seeking your approval to, uh, sign the necessary documents. This is for a design-build concept using a local company called SelfGen Incorporated. And also, uh, seeking authorization for some additional funds. Though we did secure a two hundred and sixteen thousand dollar grant from Efficiency Maine, uh, project costs including construction and consulting and support. Um, also, certainly, uh, does put us a bit out of budget in terms of what the CIP approval was in the current year. So my two proposed sources of funding was, is one from a dormant CIP account. It was designated for Soya Road back here. Uh, work has been performed and that money has just frankly been sitting there and the auditors and the finance director would like to frankly get it off the books. Uh, the remaining money, as I suggest, come out of the Public Safety Building Reserve Account. Though this facility itself will not be sized to meet the needs of that future building. Certainly, all of the background engineering and research will be of great value for that future building should it be co-located next door. So I believe it's an appropriate use of those reserve funds that have been dedicated toward these, uh, public safety buildings. Uh, so again, we have, uh, technical resources here should there be detailed questions. Uh, I- Judy Roy mentioned to me at the outset that she may wanna speak on this issue, so I remind the chair that, um, there may be some public comment.
Okay, um, well, I have, uh, public comment on it.
Thank you. Uh, Judy Roy, Second Avenue, Scarborough. Um, this is an exciting, uh, order and I wish I were there to vote on it. Um, it- the whole process began in two thousand six when Ron Owens was still the, uh, manager and they were ta- uh, they had a energy task force. And that energy task force looked at the, um, the needs of the community as far as energy and- and how people in the various, particularly the municipal departments, were, um, conserving energy and reducing the carbon footprint. And, uh, it took until two thousand nine when the Ad Hoc Committee, uh, Ad Hoc Energy Committee came on board. And, um, from the get-go, um, we had, and I'll kudos to the committee members, Paul Aubrey, who, uh, actually now is not on the committee, but he is the lead engineer. His business is the one that's designing this. Um, we had a really exciting group with Paul Aubrey, Debbie- Deb McDonough. Um, she, uh, she is totally off the grid now as far as energy, energy for her own home. Uh, Scott Barabee and, uh, Ian Engelmann and Rick Meinken. And, uh, I was the, uh, council, uh, rep, uh, on- on that liaison on that committee. And, uh, so it's really exciting for those of us that have been on the committee for a long period of time to see this come to fruition. Um, I think what's really important, uh, the important parts of it, people will say, well, what's a Trigen model? And I- and Tom, I thought Tom would probably spit that out, but he didn't. Um, and, uh, it's very simply, the Trigen is to sim- simultaneously produce electricity, heating, and cooling from one energy source. So that's what we'll be doing. And, the goals of the project, as we moved along, uh, with the committee, were to, one, reduce the energy cost, and that's estimated to be by twenty to thirty percent. Um, to create a revenue stream from energy initiatives and assets. And, uh, the committee is hopeful that we'll, we'll come back to you as a council and ask that a reserve fund be established. And- and we've done that with many of our, uh, like the Co- Coastal Harbor Committee and, you know, so that we always, we have monies available to move forward with projects that are important such as these. Third, uh, the third goal of the project was to enhance municipal growth by controlling energy costs. And then fourthly, to protect the environment with energy initiatives. And I think this- this Trigenration model speaks to that. And, uh, the next order, I'm gonna be leaving before the next order, but the next order is going to talk about the installation of some solar panels on two of our buildings, the Community Services Maintenance Building and the North Scarborough, um, uh, Fire Station, which the cost of installation is being, uh, done by a- a separate entity. Uh, and the town will buy the energy from that, but will have the option of buying that solar power, uh, system uh, in six or seven years for a low sum of seventy-two thousand dollars. So I- I just wanted, you know, to encourage you to, uh, approve this, uh, and- and move us forward. Um, the return on investment, uh, for this project, although costing, uh, a total of, um, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, the return on investment is less than four years. And I think that speaks well for that, for that energy project. And I think as a municipality, we are on the forefront for municipalities as far as what we're doing to try to be self-sufficient with our energy, energy needs. We started out looking at all kinds of low-hanging fruit, uh, and, uh, we've done, and many of our departments had, were already doing many of those things, investigating biodiesel fu- fuel, um, putting in new lighting that was more economic, uh, talking about idling policies for particularly public work. So there are a lot of low-hanging fruit. We've also reached out to the community. We do have a website. And if you look under the committees, you'll see Energy Committee and there's, uh, there's ways in which you can contact Energy Committee if you have home, uh, needs for energy conservation. So, all in all, the whole project is really, really exciting. We've got some new members on the committee, Anton Bodar, Sandy Dagro, David, uh, Kirstein, and- and Mike Wallace, uh, just joined the committee, and Bill Donovan is the council liaison. So the committee is real excited that we've come this far, uh, to get this Trigen model in place. And then the solar energy just happened as we moved along the way. And, uh, it- it bodes well for the, for the town of Scarborough. And also, kudos to the town manager who saw this as an innovative, uh, uh, project. And he's moved forward with us and he'll admit that he probably wasn't quite as savvy as he needed to be on energy conservation and, uh, nouveau ways of creating energy. But, uh, certainly, there's a lot that all of us can do to save energy. Uh, uh, in my own home, my electric bill was a hundred and forty dollars a month. I now pay sixty-nine dollars a month and I've dealt just with basically low-hanging fruit. Insulation, CFL light bulbs and- and the like. And so, um, there's lots of ways that we can reduce the carbon footprint on- on- on our, on our planet. Uh, and Scarborough is, uh, making great strides by doing this Trigen model. So I encourage you to approve the manager's request and to, and to, uh, use the monies as he suggested, uh, to, uh, finance the shortfall of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Um, council discuss- is it discussion and questions? You have a question?
I don't have a question, no.
Okay. Uh, discussion?
Just gonna make a comment. Um, just for the members at home, I- I wanna reiterate, um, I- I know it sounds like a scary number at first. It's eight hundred thousand to invest. But, um, first of all, to have cleaner, more efficient energy is always something that can be, is a- a- a great thing for our community. And, um, as Judy touched on, I think she said the turnaround is a four-year period. So for such a little investment to have a quick turnaround, and I think I did read somewhere, um, the life expectancy of this is, uh, thirty years. So to- to save money in a short amount of time and- and have cleaner, better energy that we produce is kinda one of those no-brainer. I'll vote for it, but (laugh). Uh, but thank you. I guess that's my one other thing. Um, thank you for all the hard work that this committee. Uh, it's mind-numbing to read this material, I'm not gonna lie. Some of it went over my head. Um, you know, I tried to understand it. The diagrams are great. Still don't quite wrap my head around it. But, um, you know, thank you again for all the hard work of, of, very smart folks that- that are on this committee, so.
Council Donovan?
Uh, for people who are unfamiliar with Trigen, as I was, (cough), uh, in this case, it is, it's like a mini-power plant, (cough), and it's fueled by natural gas. There's natural gas in Route One, not in most of the neighborhoods. But natural gas is a cleaner, cheaper fuel source. And we're going to produce not just elec- excess electricity that, under the arrangements that you can now make with CMP, you can essentially bank it or use it, as Tom said, behind the meter. Uh, there's a certain degree of allowance so that other buildings are gonna be able to get power produced uh, that we have here that we're banking with, with CMP. So it's- it's very valuable in that respect. And it's a sophisticated system. A lot of the cost here is the engineering because, uh, it- it is doing, not just elec- creating electricity in a power plant, but also air conditioning and heating. Uh, and so it- it's a, it's a wonderful advancement for our community to be a model for cleaner fuels. Uh, and we are in the, I've just joined the Energy Committee a couple of months ago and I must say, uh, Judy's pretty much legend on there for her pushing this Trigen project. She, her leadership was instrumental in this. She should be recognized for that, so, uh, wanna thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Close? Nope. Thank you, Judy.
Order number fourteen twenty-one is act on the request to authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents to the power purchase agreement with Scarborough Solar LLC.
So this project, um, also comes with the, the Energy Committee. Uh, it actually came to the Energy Committee's attention, though they've been talking about this. It really didn't get momentum until, actually, Council Blaze was involved with the initiative on the employee incentive program. Uh, Mr. Donovan may have served on that, um, in a civilian capacity before his time on council.
Yes.
One of the employees suggested that we consider this and really with that, we, we began to study it a bit further. Uh, this, uh, considers a partnership with Revision Energy and really the creation of a new, what is called, uh, proposed to be called Scarborough Energy LLC. So it'd be a separate corporation, uh, through which we would, or, from which we would actually purchase power for the first seven years. The good news for us, we purchased it essentially two cents less than the market cost, so there's savings initially. And then there's a future decision for us to make, uh, in year seven as to whether we wanna buy the system out. And like a, a fairly conventional lease situation, there is a defined residual cost. Uh, that is defined as seventy-two thousand dollars. That's a decision for a future council, a future date. Uh, but I think it'll make eminent sense when that day comes around that we do in fact exercise that option. So essentially, the beauty of this program is we, uh, provide no capital upfront. Uh, Revision Energy equips, uh, the two facilities. And I should mention the two proposed, uh, this, uh, with this project is the Community Services Public, uh, Community Services Co- uh, Maintenance Building, excuse me, next to the ice rink, and also the North Scarborough Fire Station. Uh, I believe those were chosen, uh, in large part due to their electrical use themselves, uh, the orientation of the roof and, and probably the ease of, uh, application or installation. Um, and this project is essentially ready to go within the month. So we'll be looking to reap the benefits of this right away. Uh, so what's, what I'm, uh, here asking for you to authorize me tonight would be to sign the power purchase agreement. Again, the concept is that we, uh, through this agreement, agree to buy power back from this corporation, if you will, that we're a party to, uh, for the, for, for a period of time. Uh, I, I don't know, I don't recall whether I provided you a complete copy of the agreement, but I assure you, it's been well scrutinized and reviewed by town, uh, the town attorney. And we're very comfortable with, uh, with the document as it is and do recommend approval.
Judy, do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Council Donovan?
Uh, this is a really unique public-private partnership. Uh, this involves, uh, private entities, uh, and pretty philanthropic too because of the deal that the town gets out of this, uh, putting the money up to, uh, install the solar panels. Uh, they've selected the, the best, the lowest-hanging fruit, as people say, uh, for the town so that the, uh, payback will be the fastest. So we're able to not have any money go out at the present time, buy power, uh, electric power at a discounted rate for the next seven years while the income tax, federal income tax credits run their course for the investor of the money. Uh, and then buy at a discount, uh, all of which is a very, very desirable outcome. And again, is demonstrating, uh, a really good energy leadership for the ti- for the town.
I'd just like to add to that, that, uh, this came to us through an employee of the town. Uh, and had read something someplace and made a suggestion and we acted on it and it's coming to fruition.
One last con- I have one comment. Uh, wait, well, two. I lied, I have two. Um, my first comment is that I'm, I'm glad to hear that this is the product of an employee, employee's idea. I- I think that's a great thing. That, that was what we were looking for, you know, cost savings ideas. Um, so that's fantastic. Um, so I just wanna applaud our, our staff for always thinking, you know, a little bit more. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to say is, um, certainly I do, uh, support the solar project. Uh, I just hope that we take some time to maybe view other buildings that we have a- and look for similar projects, as far as I'm concerned. You know, the more of these types of things we can do, this will cost savings, it's greener, it's better. Um, you know, to look at, you know, keep looking at every building we have, you know, public works, um, all, the other fire barns. Maybe solar didn't work there. Does something else work there? Um, maybe that's wind or, you know, whatever. But, you know, just keep, keep marching with those, those green projects.
Council Donovan?
The Energy Committee is, is doing a bit of a, an audit process by going around. Our last meeting was at the Public Works, uh, uh, facility and we toured it. And so the Energy Committee was able to look at and, and the discussion that ensued was that there may be some things that we could propose in the, uh, in the, uh, realm of improved efficiencies. Uh, so I think that's a great, I, I applaud your comment.
So, to the point, um, we're buying, we're gonna be buying electricity at two cents below market?
Two cents.
Two cents, rather. I meant two cents below market.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, there's, it's the buyout's an option.
That's right.
So, it's, sounds like a win-win to me.
Right. And I, I think when that time comes, um, it should be abundantly clear that the buyout option is preferred, but we defer that decision for a different day.
The useful, the useful life of these systems is about forty years.
Oh, okay.
So after six years of tax credits, if we get the rest... So after six years of tax credits, if we get the rest, uh, we own it, and, uh, uh, it would- it would be very financially advantageous.
That sounds it.
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay, with that, um, all those in favor? Oppose?
Seeing none. Thank you all.
Order number fourteen twenty-two is act to authorize the town manager to sign the purchase and sale option agreement with Habitat for Humanity for property located at seventy-five Broad Turn Road.
I guess I'm on.
Yes.
I'm on again.
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Holbrook certainly can jump in, he's been right, uh, in the middle and immersed, fully in this issue. Um, as the council's aware, and I hope the public as well, uh, the town's awarded for a couple of years now with Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland regarding a partnership to build what we view as workforce housing, affordable housing, on town-owned property at seventy-five Broad Turn Road. Uh, this project has gone through any number of, uh, maturation's o- over that period of time, initially, and- and still fundamentally, there's a memorandum of understanding that lays out the- the essence of the deal, if you will. There have been some things that have changed, predominantly due to Habitat's, um, pursuit of financing this project. This is distinctly different than their model. Uh, typically, uh, they do one house, you know, they identify a family and build one house and move on to the next. This is really taking on the role of responsibility as though they're developer, and in fact, they are. Uh, the- the basic concept and what's changed is that the memorandum of- of understanding, uh, envisioned seventeen lots and seventeen homes. I shouldn't say seventeen lots, seventeen homes, uh, and now they're proposing thirteen, and that's due in large part to, um, they don't have as great a need, I guess, uh, to- to, uh, in terms of funding the infrastructure improvement costs. Uh, but they feel very comfortable that thirteen is a doable number and manageable for them. Uh, also, their new financing requires pushing out the project a bit longer in the- in the first instance, though interestingly, the project would actually be completed sooner under this proposal. So what I'm here before you this evening is to request, uh, an authorization to sign an amended and restated purchase option agreement, uh, that we have in place currently with Habitat, uh, to do exactly what I said. Um, again, Counsel Holbrook has been fully immersed in this and perhaps could- could have some comments, and I'm pleased to answer questions you might have.
Hey, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
If I just might add one comment to that, the other thing about the thirteen, going down to thirteen, um, that was also in part to address, there were some neighborhood concerns, um, through that process. Um, and that was something we had unofficially agreed to with the neighborhood, is that if we could make the numbers work and financing, you know, all come into play, um, that we would shrink that number of- of housing down a little bit. Um, so again, it was originally seventeen, thirteen's a little, you know, obviously less, and makes the neighborhood a little more happy as well, so.
Well, it's word a little different, I missed a step, public comment. Is a, um, is there anybody from the public that'd like to comment on this? Seeing none, move back to council discussion. Is there any discussion?
I- I know, yeah, I know, just knowing the real- real estate market the way I do, that I think it's exciting to be able to, um, provide and offer houses that are a little more affordable, uh, to folks, um, who wanna live in Scarborough. So, um, I'm- I'm very supportive of this project, I think it's great.
Okay, I- I joined the meeting, um, I think it was the last meeting, was it? Did you have another one after that?
Uh, informal, but yes.
Yeah, and to see, um, how, you know, how it was progressing along, I'm very interested in it. Scarborough definitely needs affordable homes, um, which haven't really been happening. A lot of them are just fix- fix-me-uppers, and, uh, this is pretty exciting, to be, uh, a model of Scarborough. And in the hopes that we could, uh, in the future, move along, maybe do more of these projects jointly. Um, the biggest question, one of the questions that came up during the- the meeting I was at, and I'd like to ask this. In the new agreement, or some sort of a, the wording in it, uh, it was supposed to be, um, Scarborough residents, um, or, uh, employees had first refused it? Or if they were able to, uh, we had to ask them first.
Yeah, there's no such requirement, and certainly that's been a- a point of discussion, and I think a point of, um, priority for the Alliance. And to the extent that the Alliance will assist in identifying folks and helping them market the properties, our first order of business, I think, will be to prospect right in our backyard. Uh, we have email addresses of, you know, something like five hundred either town or school employees, which, uh, I think is some of the best ground to cover, frankly. Uh, that's- that's the thing that's most, um, telling about this whole cause, is that when we- when- when we say workforce, we're talking about teachers, firemen, um, you know, police officers can't afford to live in our town, and I think that's a tragedy. So I think your point's well taken, uh, I'm not aware of any such requirement that it must be, uh, Scarborough residents. I- I see a signal from the end.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's five, there's five Alliance units.
Yes, five Alliance units, but I- I thought the question was whether there was a- a requirement for Scarborough residents. I think there's always been a preference, and we'll continue to push that preference. Uh, one of the challenging things, and I think we're very close to this point, is that we've really made a point of, uh, ensuring that Habitat is the developer. And I think that we're very interested in the project, in the final pro- in the process, we also need to acknowledge that they are developer, and we can't control every part of it. Um, having said that, they've been very receptive to our involvement, in fact, this week, uh, two members of the Alliance that are in the audience and I attended a design meeting with, uh, folks from Habitat and their designers. Uh, and I think it was very appreciated from our point of view to be able to still be involved at that level and that level of detail. But, um, again, I think it's important that Habitat step out front very soon and, uh, and act and become the developer of this project.
No, I- I agree with that, I've- I've been hoping that the, uh, we're going to, uh, come forward before now, we're, uh, so patiently waiting.
And I think the- the public would be interested to know that this is one of the principal goals that we set to move forward on, uh, workforce housing, affordable housing, and it's nice to see this come to fruition.
Any other comments? Seeing none, put it to a vote, all those in favor? Oppose?
Thank you all.
Order number fourteen twenty-three is act on the request in the Ad Hoc Animal Control Advisory Committee to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report?
Oh, um.
Would that be in order?
Do we need to amend it or is that?
Well, first of all, do you have, you wanna, um, uh, do you wanna, um, explain anything with it before we go to public comment presenting?
No, I- I think we were just ex- uh, it was, this was a formal acceptance of the report from the committee, I think that was the intent of the- of the motion.
Yeah, i- in fact, you know, the council created the committee, gave it its, gave it the charge, it's come back to you with its report, I think it's only appropriate for you to simply accept that. And in doing so, I don't see you endorsing all of it, or any of it.
Nope.
Uh, you're simply accepting and acknowledging that the work was completed as requested.
That's correct, that's- that's what I was looking for. Um, and just to reiterate, um, it- it's a report that the committee did, and like the manager said, we're just accepting their findings. We're not voting to enact anything. So, um, with that, is there any public comment? The proposal, and name and address, three minutes.
See, the benefit of you guys, uh, getting done with this is I won't have to talk with you anymore, you won't have to listen anymore, 'cause we're probably both tired of that. Uh, I just wanted to say, I was, uh, very encouraged by listening to your discussions tonight with regard to, uh, this report. Uh, obviously, there's more to come, but it was, uh, very encouraging, Counsel Holbrook and Sinclair, Mr. Sullivan as well, um, uh, bringing what I think is, uh, a very measured approach to the proceeding, and I wanted to thank you for that. Uh, certainly, there's been rhetoric, uh, back and forth on this for quite a while, uh, it is a hot issue, uh, as you have surmised. Um, but I thought you were, uh, very well informed and very measured in your approach on how you're, uh, proceeding, and I- I did wanna recognize you for that. I'm sure you've taken heat from me and many others on both sides, um, but when you, uh, when you are acting, uh, in a way that should be recognized, it's fair to recognize you for that, and so I wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Rovner, for King Street, Scarborough, I just have a question, the report that you're accepting, um, I know it includes, I just wanna make sure it includes both the majority, minority, and the independent study that was done, all three? Can I take a yes from that?
Not sure what the independent study is, but it does-
Well, not study, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word, the inde- the independent, um, what word do you wanna use? Joanne Mahoney submitted something to the council, I just wanna make sure, and it was supposed to be part of the report, I just wanna make sure that all three items are gonna be studied, have the opportunity to be studied by the council.
They've all been provided to council, that report is not part of the committee's report, but the materials have been provided to council.
Is the minority, um, report part of the?
Yes, it is.
Part of this?
Yeah, it's all available online, I encourage you to- to- to view the report.
I brought you the look at it.
We all received it right here.
Okay.
So now we have it, uh, we've read it.
I just wanted to make sure that, because you're signing off on something, having me see something, I just wanna make sure that was part of it.
This is right, it's the full committee report.
Great, thank you very much.
Good evening, Counsel, Joanne Mahoney, eighteen Pillsbury Drive, I'm the one that submitted the citizen's proposal, and I just wanted to make sure that, um, you do have a look at it and take it into your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, would anyone else like to speak on this? Seeing that, I closed the public hearing. Uh, now we need, motion.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion.
I just wanna reiterate that, um, the agenda that you may have seen, um, there was an additional word in that, that said, "and implement." That was what was changed about the agenda this evening, so order number fourteen dash twenty-three does read, "Move approval on the request for, from the Ad Hoc Animal Control Advisory Committee to accept the report." Um, there's periods there, and I just wanted to reiterate that to everybody, that it's not implement and implement, so it's just to accept that they did the work, and they've submitted it, which is what we asked of them, and, um, that's- that's where it does stop.
What was struck- struck was, "And start the process to implement its recognition," struck. So it's just to accept the report.
Just if I could, I wanted to publicly thank members of the committee, uh, these are folks that I, um, approached personally, and, um, very much appreciate the long and hard work. Uh, I assure you, it was not fun for anyone, I see two members still in the audience here, but those others that are at home, I personally very much appreciate the effort, and, uh, and I hope the council appreciates, uh, the effort and the vigilance with which they- they took the task that was given to them.
I also was gonna mention that, I was just pleading for anybody else.
Oh, I think you were.
No, that's okay, that's all right, I-
I wanted to make sure it was said.
Yep, I- I agree with you a hundred percent, um, I mean, I've watched, uh, mo- most of, I mean, I've watched every meeting. Um, unfortunately, I didn't get through all of them, the full entirety of them, um, because the kids wanted my attention, so. Um, I did what I could, and I meant, wow, there's a lot of work put into that. Um, the report isn't by any means gonna be ignored, we're still gonna digest it, there are still a lot of things that are in here, that, uh, can be, um, implemented, that are- are good for global protection. Um, and, um, let, I mean, we'll just have to see where it goes. From here. Anyone else?
I- I also would like to thank the committee for all the hard work they did, I know it was a- a lot of time, and I also wanna thank all the citizens who've shown a real interest in this issue. For me, it's always in, I don't know, I just find it very helpful to have people email and make comments, and I know you may not think that's true, but I read them all, and, uh, I try to at least get back to you to say I at least read it. Um, and again, we know we've got a lot to digest, but I think we're off to a good start, and keep emailing, that's fine.
Anything else, anyone else? What else? All those in favor? Oppose? Okay, next will be standing up and special committee reports, and I'll start with Counselor Blaise.
Um, I attended the, uh, monthly senior advisory board meeting on Tuesday morning, and they're off and running on creating a budget for this year. Um, they're also taking a look at, uh, additional programs that they'd like to implement, um, the-
Wait, take a second while they, you wanna take a minute?
No.
Let them leave. All right, we're gonna give everybody a minute, uh, we're still having that council meeting here, so, you know, go out the hall and talk. Give you a minute to go. Thank you, Counsel Blaise.
Bud Hanson, who is the chairman of the senior advisory committee, and myself are gonna meet with, uh, Andrea Killiard from Piper Shores, to discuss with her, um, her involvement in senior activities. And talk about how perhaps Piper Shores and Scarborough can team up together, form a partnership, which is one of our goals, um, to do additional activities for the seniors in the town. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
That's it.
Great. Counselor Bennett.
Uh, coastal waters did not meet, although they are down at the beach all the time, seeing how the dredging's going. Unfortunately, the weather has not been very complimentary to the workings in the water, um. And that's about that, that's all I have.
I have nothing new to add since last week.
Counselor Donovan?
I think, uh, the Energy Committee met and, uh, was able to include the remarks in- in the prior matter, so I think I'm all set.
Counselor Holbrook?
Yeah, um, so, as you can see, um, Housing Alliance is, um, meeting again, but, um, obviously, the bigger events in parts are underway, so I'm sure they'll be discussing what happened tonight. Um, Historic Preservation will be meeting Tuesday, um, March fourth at six thirty P.M., that's their regular, um, monthly meeting. Um, that meeting should be with the, if I'm not mistaken, with, um, Dan Bacon, our town planner, he's been working with us to help, um, to give us some- some ideas of where we could do things within the zoning and- and carrots and whatnot to add that, um, would help encourage preservation, and some ideas that way. Um, then his, uh, Finance Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine A.M., so that's February twentieth, and, um, that will be a joint workshop for us with the School Finance Committee, um, just to kinda talk things out a little bit, and see where they're at, and let them know where we're at. Um, and that's it for me.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just to touch on ordinance, there still has not been a ordinance committee meeting, but there is one scheduled, and that is-
March fifth.
March fifth, yeah. And, um, we'll go right to town managers.
Thank you, just a couple of points of interest, um, Scarborough is continuing its path of getting some notoriety on the national stage. Interestingly, um, about ten days ago, we're notified that Coastal Living Magazine has, uh, recognized Scarborough as, uh, in the top ten of happiest coastal towns. Given some of the discourse lately, I'm surprised we rose to that level, but none- nonetheless, we are in fact- we are in fact in the top ten, there's an online voting, um, process underway through the end of March, and if you go on the town's website, we've provided a link to that, so we encourage folks, I believe you can vote, um, it may be limited to once a day, but, um.
Once a day.
If you'll help us in that cause of being designated potentially the happiest coastal town, uh, that'd be great. Uh, uh, actually, we do get some, a very good write-up, um, you know, they come back and do a, a further, more detailed piece, which I, I don't mean to minimize how important getting that kind of press coverage, uh, free of charge is to us, so it is important, uh, so please take, take the time to vote. Also, we're responding to a request from a local production company who's interested in using a portion of Pine Point Beach to do a reenactment of, uh, it's essentially the invasion of Normandy Beach, apparently the characteristics of, uh, Pine Point Beach are very similar to, to that part of France, um, and this is for a documentary to be aired on the History Channel at some point, and so we're working through the details, uh, they'll actually have soldiers in uniform, weapons, so there's some logistical issues and notification at neighbors, uh, but that time of year, we don't think it will pose any real problem with the butters, so we're at this point working with them, and I'll pass on further details if that actually materializes. This'll be March first, so I, I think we'll be, uh, outside of any of those is, issues. In terms of the dredge project, uh, Council Benedict alluded to it, the project has been delayed, there've been contract disputes, we're not party to those particulars, but that's caused some delays, and weather has, uh, further delayed the project to the point that they've only dredged about a hundred cubic yards, now, just to put that in comparison, they're under contract to dredge over a hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards, so, um, you know, time is ticking, and the window is closing, and that they must complete work in the next six weeks or so by the end of March, so we're hopeful, they're talking about bringing on twenty-four hour shifts, uh, multiple shifts a day, but working twenty-four hours a day to catch up, so in future meetings, I'll update you on the progress, but, uh, it's been slow getting started. And just, uh, a couple of points of interest, um, meetings have been rescheduled this week, the planning board meeting, uh, that was scheduled for last night, is scheduled for next Monday evening, and the board of assessment review that was scheduled on the thirteenth is now gonna be March eighteenth. And just a last note, um, next Friday, I'll be meeting with three classes, uh, it's a civics course, it's about at the high school here, um, George Jones, the teacher, and I have established a relationship whereby he brings his classes over, and we actually have it here in council chamber, and it's a great opportunity for me to frankly talk to, uh, although I've got teenagers at home, but, uh, hear from them what's on their mind, and, uh, it always amazes me, um, the sorts of things they pick up at dinner conversation and hopefully reading local newspapers, um, so I look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. Councilor comments, Councilor Holbrook?
Uh, yes, I have, um, sorry, get prepared, um, this is a point in, in the meeting where, um, generally do our condolences to the families of people that have lost loved ones here in town, um, so I do have that list this evening, um, I would like to offer our condolences to the Helen Ward family, the Dorothea Bell, Belligeron family, Louise Callahan family, um, Robert Carrier, who was, um, he's actually, he was served in the Navy for World War Two and the Korean War, and, um, kind of an interesting character, he had retired from S.D. Warren after forty years, but then, um, went to, um, which as a family member for him, hosted Papa's Workshop at the Toddle Inn for, for quite a while, very interesting, um, so as well as, um, Peter Demas, um, Richard Ellis, um, Euphema Larrabee, also known as Fay, she was our, um, Scarborough's Boston Post Kane Award, um, recipient, um, so she, again, very colorful, interesting, unique individual, um, during the war, she became a welder, um, helping to build the Liberty ships over in South Portland, um, and she was very active in, in a lot of charitable events, um, e- even in her, um, advance years, that she did knitting hats and mittens for the needy, just a very involved lady in the community, um, Phyllis Maryard, Doris Chamberlain, Angoli, Marguerite Reserve Martin, um, she's another one of our, our Scarborough lifetime residents who passed away, um, Norman Mayberry, Elizabeth Ann Mullen, um, my rating, Lillian Ronfeldt, um, Rose Ireland Ruffel, um, she's another, um, resident that had been a longtime resident here in Scarborough, she was from the Green Acres neighborhood, um, and again, very interesting lady, she, um, spent forty-plus years singing with the choir at First Congressional Church of Scarborough, and she was, um, held several state championships in candlepin bowling, so it's pretty interesting. Um, Agnes Plummer Watson, um, you probably recognize the Plummer name, um, she's a member of Dunston Grange for over fifty years, um, not a lifetime, but certainly a long-time resident here in Scarborough, um, and for a period of time, she worked in the West Scarborough Post Office, um, again, very active, although she was not, um, she did not participate in our services, um, but she did volunteer, um, through World War Two, over five hundred hours of, um, volunteer time, um, and then she was also, um, a number of years, she was the organist at the church, um, United Methodist here in Scarborough.
Can you mention one thing with that? Uh, Dick Ellis, uh, served for many years on Injun Southern, volunteer.
Um.
Volunteer.
Thank you. Um, and then as far as, my other comment is, you guys will all see having your big bags sitting in front of you, um, and to those that might be interested, um, I was informed this evening by Tom that we will be getting more bags in that we'll have here at Town Hall, so if there's any residents interested in also helping to help us fundraise for the Scarborough Fuel Assistance Program that we do with Project Grace, we'll have bags right here at Town Hall, so, fill in your bags.
Yes, that's a lot of bags.
You can do it.
I don't drink that.
(laughing) I figure we can invade upon neighbors.
Can we write a check in lieu?
No. You gotta, maybe you should still write a check, but, no, you're not in lieu.
Yeah. Maybe, uh, it's known, but ju- just make sure the tags are on the other side of the envelope, so the tags need to make their way in the bag, or it doesn't work for us.
Anything else?
This is for me, sorry.
Council Donovan?
Uh, I missed the last meeting, so I don't know if this was previously mentioned, uh, that we had that weather problem, so, uh, last Wednesday, I wasn't available, uh, but I, I did see, uh, a show, a children's educational program on Saturday morning about three weeks ago, called Born to Explore, uh, and it highlighted, uh, um, Scarborough, it was all, virtually all in Scarborough, and, uh, and, and focused on some of the iconic elements of Maine, lobstering, uh, coming out of Pine Point, uh, harbor area, uh, and a clam bake on Ferry Beach, it was, uh, it was a beautifully done show, really portrayed Scarborough for all the beauty that it represents, and it's probably available online, so that I think if you search for it, you probably could find maybe a YouTube tube version, but it was definitely worth the, the, the watch, it was a very nice show, and great, uh, great reflection of Scarborough.
Thank you, Council Kettering?
Um, yes, I will be holding my, uh, open house, Council Open House, on Saturday, March first, at the Dunston Fire Station, from ten A.M. until noon, so, uh, please feel free to come down to Dunston Fire Station, bring the kids, the, uh, guys and gals down there love to show off the equipment, um, I'm open to listening to any issues you have, any kudos for the town, or just come in and say hi, I'll have coffee and, uh, something to eat, so come on in.
Thank you.
Good.
Council Blaze?
No comments.
Council Benedict?
Ready to go home.
(laughing).
Um, I guess, just in, um, closing, um, we had our, I would say, our first out of maybe two, um, workshops on the, um, animal control ordinance, and global ordinance, protection ordinance, so, um, it's, uh, I'm just thinking it's gonna take some time to work through this and try to get it right, so, and I think that will be my closing comment, so, motion adjourned.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Now I'm gonna go celebrate my birthday.
(laughing) Hey.
Today.
Well, happy birthday.
Go out, go out, have some dinner and.
That's what I didn't wanna say, that's somebody that asked me.
How, how, I know you said it, and I swear to God, I was paying attention.
Yeah, right.
Open house, it's nine.
Yeah, it's, no, ten A.M. del.
See, I went really well.
I hope that's what I said anyway, I'm, I'm, it's a Saturday, March, Saturday, March. Bring the kids, you know, come on down, see the firefighters, whatever.
Yeah.
Open house, Council.
It's the five.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, yeah, if he's ever talking to you guys.